To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The local? The President?
Here.
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 Here. The President accounted for. Let's move on to public comment.
Show and tell. Jim Marshall, I live at 590 Ten Lawn Road. Town Council, Planning Board, do a lot of credit for hard work. Agree, disagree, depends on a lot of careful consideration of their decision. About a year ago, developers approached me to use my property for a solar farm. Since my farm is ideal for the use, easy connection, clear acres, and rather great. I checked out your pilot site. What solar farm they set up, these based in Post Office. And the URI professor said her homes net being project be better than expected, inequally uneventful in operation. I spoke to Joe Schilling in Public Utilities, Chris Turnes in the Office of Energy Resources, and from this input, a row of solar panels became as indistinguishable as the row of potatoes, and I signed a lease. Please agree to it. Next one was the Planning Board meetings, more education on solar, but they were talking about saving standard trees, open spaces, and stone fences. They also voiced concerns about Exeter residents' rural experience. I don't think everyone extra has these experiences, concerns, and values in Planning Board making hearing from a vocal minority. One hiccup is that signing an agreement that the landlord doesn't need to speak, as we're nowhere near the experience of solar farms as does developers. I don't have standard trees like trees that have fallen or gonna fall. Any open space I have was made for hanging a fire prevention, and not once was my neighbor's aesthetic view considered. I don't have stone fences, I have rock piles. And this ordinance would still preclude me from doing solar just what they wanted me needed to do. Most importantly, my family did not come from within state for rural experience. They came from out state for rather than problem plantation experience, which by definition means past crops, and which you voted for. Draft date's approach was for the viewers, not the doers. As the solar drafts progressed, there was a constant talk of nothing running utility in residential area. And soon my RUI four site was included, and a matrix requiring a special permit. My site has two barns, Exodus First Fire Station, a cream reconversion domicile, and all concrete 3,000 bushel root cellar, fixtures for water mill, and two electric heaters, which is residential at least. If you move in an extra barn, you should expect noise, aroma, and other disruptions, such as when petunia go and petunia the cow gets loose. My barn was built in 1915, when the Kaiser was king, the Tsar was king, the king was king.
Your three minutes has expired.
It's on the agenda, so wait.
Three minutes per person on the public hearing. We can speak at that public.
Next is Joan Mall.
Yes. Can I speak from here, or do you want me to go?
You have to speak loud, I know I'm definitely.
My name is Joan Mall, I live on Southern Trail. One of the solar panels is proposed to be put right next to our three point something acre parcel of land. And I mean right next to it. I'm concerned about our well water. We run out of well water at times. I'm concerned about groundwater contamination. I'm wondering whether the town council even looked at or considered the planning board's suggestions. I don't know whether they finalized their ordinance that they proposed. I'm very concerned, I'm wondering, will there be periodic DEM inspections? How will we know that our ground isn't contaminated? Defoliums, herbicides, insecticides? I live right next to it. I'm very concerned, I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done to put the brakes on this? I doubt it. I'm concerned that three people could make the decision for a whole town without bringing it up for a vote. There was supposed to be an operation and maintenance plan. Has anything like that been submitted to the Planning Board, to the council? I think there's a lot on these revisions that haven't been looked at. Thank you, I'm just very concerned.
Next is Ted Metalli.
I gotta get my clock going. So I'll go over it, hang on. Okay, I had a very good experience the other day. I left to go to the town hall to the dump or the recycling center, I didn't call it. And when I got there, I thought on the way, oh my god, your sticker is new on the second. So I come by here, and there's nobody here. I go over to the dump, or the recycling center, and I get there and they said to me, oh, you can dump your recyclables, but you can't dump your garbage, because your sticker is no good. No provisions made for the fact that people would be coming in there and be turned away. Couple of cars, so I stood, I stood and watched. Probably in the beginning, I stood and watched to make sure they let anybody through. The gentleman there did a very nice job, they did the same thing for every person that they handled. However, in the course of that whole thing, as I was watching, four or five cars came in, two of them had stickers, three of them didn't. Next ten cars that came in had no stickers whatsoever. They were turned away. In fact, there was an elderly gentleman who got out of the car, he could just barely walk. He couldn't take his, he put his garbage into his car, now he had to take it out again and put it at home. They were very nice to him, they did take his recyclables for him and throw them into the thing. No provisions for the fact that it's a Sunday, and there was nobody around to be able to accept such money to get those stickers. I would say that 70% of the people who went there on Sunday were told, you can't dump your garbage here, only your recyclables per order of Mr. Matzek. Okay, fine, I pay $6,000 a year in taxes. You know what I get for it? I happen to get my streets cleaned now, okay? So there was no provision for somebody to have decency. I understand what the ordinance says, this is what I was told, the ordinance says, oh, we're enforcing ordinances on the town, you pay big taxes, you pay money to dump your whole, your stuff, but you can't do it. Number one, you could have had somebody there, solved the problem, I checked my pocket. Number two, you could have told the people who were coming in there, excuse me, but you're in violation of the ordinance, and because you're in violation, we're gonna give a heart, we care about you people. So you can come today, but you can never come again. In other words, take your garbage and go home, doesn't matter. I don't know who set this rule, whether it was the town council, or it was Matzek himself, but to turn around and say that you're enforcing an ordinance on the people and the elderly, that's my biggest point, on the elderly, that you can't drop your garbage because you didn't get your certificate right away? Come on, give me a break. Then go on, in here it says, call for a time that we're open to accept your things. What is it with you people? You don't care about the citizens, you just care about cash flow. That's all it amounts to. I got the five, four, three, two, one, I'm off.
Thanks, Ken. Next, number four, acknowledgements and announcements. Transfer stickers. Thanks for tearing that up before we tied it.
I wanted to lay it off.
The privilege of September 1st, 2018 through August 31st of 2019, now on sale to the clerk's office, call five hours.
Call four hours.
We're open tomorrow night, and Thursday night until 6:00. Then we are open next Saturday from 7:30 to 3:30. I mean, we're open 9 to 4 too, the rest of the week.
You're back to regular hours.
We are back to regular hours, so it's 9 to 4 regular hours, and 9 to 6 tomorrow and Thursday.
Is that posted?
It's been posted, it's on the website.
B, the annual shelter will be closed to the public, September 11th through September 14th for state mandated training. Are there any other announcements?
This came up a month or so, or maybe, but since we have a lot of people in the room tonight. The annual parade is in danger of being discontinued, Nishias Parade may be our last one. So far, we've had one volunteer, sent a letter, we accepted her on the parade committee. If you want to do something for your town, you want to come out, get involved with the parade committee. So I'll be, we don't want to lose our Memorial Day Parade. A lot of work goes into it, something to consider tonight.
Frank?
Mr. President, did you get connected by, contacted by William Penoyah?
Yeah, he left me a voicemail.
Okay, do you want me to read the email that he sent me?
Sure, please.
Mr. Penoyah is the program coordinator for the 9/11 ceremony that's done every year at the Veterans Cemetery. He asked me to read this in tonight's council meeting. Veterans of the nation's armed forces of South County and surrounding communities courageously invite the residents of Exeter to take part in a special ceremony at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 11th, at the Wall of Honor, which sits at the center of the Rhode Island Veterans Memorial Cemetery, for the purpose of paying homage to those who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks, and to salute those combating worldwide terrorism. The event will feature the presentation of the colors, times for prayer, the laying of a memorial wreath, along with the ringing of the four fives, a series of bells straights signifies the loss of the firefighter on duty. Members of the Rhode Island Funeral Honors Team are slated to fire a rifle salute and perform taps. The special ceremony owes its origins to a guide prepared by the American Legion National Executive Committee, "A Day to Remember", a community commemoration in remembrance of September 11th, 2001. In case of inclement weather, the ceremony will still go forward at a nearby nearby inside. The U.S. flag code calls for flags to vibrate half-staffed at this day. So once again, it's Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. at the Wall of Honor at the Rhode Island Veterans Memorial Cemetery down in Air Room 2. That's it, thank you.
Any other knowledge, Mr. Annamans? Does anybody need a copy of the agenda, precise?
Anybody else, agenda?
Did I miss new business? Did I miss new business?
Just started. All right, approval of the agenda order?
So moved.
Any discussion? If they ever say aye?
Aye.
The agenda, there was one voucher from the Rentals Trust. Any reports, anybody wish to remove? Moving on to communications, Cal will start with you.
Only number 15, which we should be addressing shortly.
Frank? I have one as well. Number 15. From approval of minutes, I think we have to remove numbers three and four, Frankie, you were asking for that meeting. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special council meeting July 30th, 2018, and the special council meeting executive session for July 30th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? If they ever say aye?
Aye.
Vacancies and appointments? Nothing new on personnel conservation or? Resignations? Oh, we just got the letter. Okay.
Excuse me, regarding that issue, though, I did have a conversation with Adina. No wonder under administrative issues, since it's a position that really needs to be filled, the animal shelter, I wanted to take an exception and address it as an administrative issue.
Can I speak about that from number four?
Do you record it? Okay.
Number four, Cal, because I talked to Steve about that.
Okay.
We'll talk at that point. Appointments from Memorial Day Committee? Still, continue to post. For the canvassers, no applicants. Planning Board alternate member. We have one, 15, Cal, you pulled.
We have a letter of interest here, dated August 28th, and it's a request from Donna DiDonato, asking if she could be considered for this welcome of position on the Planning Board. And she does speak to the fact that she served on the board many years ago, and interested in becoming part of the board once again. She also writes, I appreciate your assistance in presenting my name, this is addressed to Brett Baughn. As a resident of Exeter who is interested in serving on the board, I believe my experience as a resident of Exeter for so many years, and as an attorney will truly complement the present membership of this board. Having said that, I would move to reappoint her to that position.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Closed? No applicants for the Exeter Shrinage Regional School District building? Continue to post. And no expiring terms? All right, moving on to number eight, public hearings, continue. The public entertainment license applications. Lynn Hall, present, Boulder Dash LLC, 53 Beacon Drive in Catty, Rhode Island. Boulder Dash Doggy Dash Obstacle Run for Dogs and Their Owners, Sunday, October 21st, 2018, rain date of the 28th. 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Kent Panachus, 4 Exeter Road. So I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Last time, they were missing a letter of permission, located by the Fire Marshal, and they still had these waiting.
We've gotten everything except the fees, and we think Lynn's for the Exeter.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant, well, they're in front of us.
So does the dog run aside? How does the dogs feel?
It's focused on the dogs, so it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past. We're actually focusing on the dog, dog has to be on leash. Parent comes, parent adult goes with them. It's a little bit smaller than what we usually do, of course, it's a lot smaller. And it's things that you would see sort of on an agility horse for a dog, but a little bit more rustic.
Goes against obstacle course for dogging?
Yeah. But as the dog's owner, you're doing it with them. But it's not about you, it's about them.
I see. Is that something you came up with?
Yeah. I love my dog.
Good, that's good, I mean, that's great. I hear a lot of good things about Boulder Dash.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Thank you.
But it's experimental, has it been tried?
Sort of. I've seen trail runs and 5Ks, I haven't seen what we do yet.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll also make a motion to grant the public entertainment license to the applicant. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Number B, continued. The public entertainment license application for a email meetup for Friends of the Exeter Animals, 33 Ligon Lane, West Shrinage, Rhode Island. Classic Car Show with Crass Food Vendors, Saturdays up to the 15th. Rain date of Sunday the 16th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Exeter Animal Shelter, 169 South Pennant Trail, Exeter. Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Cal?
Yes?
There's three seats up there, gentlemen, if you want to sit. I don't spit, so.
So last time, they also, they owe 138 mailings. The 15th application fee was up near, there was, we all see at the Fire Marshal, I believe?
Yep, we received everything. The only reason we're ready was they asked for a waiver of the application fee. But they have submitted everything they needed, it was outstanding.
Is Jamie here present tonight? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to grant the license with or without the waiver?
Two.
Two, which do we want?
With, they grant, the, I'm sorry. The waiver, yes.
So you're making a motion to grant the application with the waiver?
Second.
Okay.
There you go.
Any discussion?
No, just to remind people that September 15th, classic car show fundraiser for Friends of Exeter Animals, and they contribute significantly to the ongoing operation of animal shelter. If you're into classic cars, it's a good thing to go.
A lot of people come out, it's a lot of fun. I know one year I was a judge, Bob Johnson and I were judges, so it's a lot of fun, you get together and it promotes, promotes our shelter, and adopt the process, and so on and so forth. So I think it's a good thing that they do for us in this county.
Can we go to the discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to our third and final public hearing. Amendments, the Exeter Court of Ordinances as proposed by the Exeter Planning Board. Appendix A, zoning, Article 1, administration procedures. Section 1.2, definitions, Article 2, zoning district use regulations. Sections 2.4.1, use category, Article 11, legal energy, Article 11.1.1a, utility scale solar photovoltaic facility, and Section 11.1b, residential small-scale solar photovoltaic facility. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? We have members of the planning board here, is anybody in the council which to speak first? Could you, before us?
I would, if I could, and I can hope that the planning board will eventually be prepared to speak and answer questions, but I'd just like to refer initially to a memorandum that we received from our town planner, dated April 30th. And this memo outlined thumbnail sketch of their draft A, which they were proposing to the council for council's consideration. And this was a, this was a long process, and actually, as speaks to this in this memo, underwent, the ordinance underwent a number of revisions. And I recall that the first time that it was discussed by the council was June 30th of 2017. I know that, because I wasn't able to attend the meeting that night, and then realized that that was the beginning of this discussion. But in any case, there's a summary of changes, and I just think that the public needs to know and I'm just gonna highlight a couple of features of the memorandum that we received. And it reads in part, "The major changes to this draft A ordinance are in the approach toward regulating. We have designed this ordinance to regulate energy facilities by size. The previous drafts were in an all or nothing type of approach, in the sense that the only options were utility scale, which was not categorized by size, or residential small scale. The new approach, which is part of this piece that we're gonna add tonight, new approach looks at solar energy facilities under five distinct and defined categories, building mounted, small scale, medium scale, large scale, and utility scale." And goes on to say that the board feels strongly, this is a better approach, it allows for the issue of scale to be better understood and managed. The scale of the proposed facility has become a prominent issue in these applications locally and statewide. It speaks to the current ordinance, which did nothing to address the issue of size. All sizes were approached the same way, et cetera. Two other points I'd just like to make. Since the first few drafts of this amended ordinance, we have been, we have seen a ground swell in Exeter residents taking interest in this topic. Exeter residents have stated that they don't want utility scale solar residential neighborhoods, but that alone caused the planning board to pause and reevaluate their approach. The board feels strongly that this size-based approach, the one that they're picking up in this ordinance, allows for the proper facilities in the proper areas, zones of town. Now let me just conclude with the last paragraph. The board feels very strongly that this ordinance as presented in drafting is imperative to protecting Exeter's natural features, forested areas, active farmland, and general character as a scenic wooded rural town, in which many people have made their home precisely for those attributes. This draft A provides ample opportunity for the development of social facilities within the town in appropriate locations, at appropriate scales, with the ability of the neighbors to be part of the process and voice their concerns. The planning board respectfully requests that we, the council, put the draft to public hearing for consideration, and they thank us for doing that. And so we're here tonight, it's taken a while to get this draft here, and in between, as you know, other actions are taken by the council. So in any case, we're hearing what the planning board has proposed for our consideration, and I just think it's important that the public know that there is an alternative to what's been already approved. Thank you, President.
Any further comments from the council regarding this ordinance?
We had a work session, I don't remember the exact date on this, but we never did get anything back from the planning department. When was that work session, July, June? Because there was issues.
May 31.
The changes that were requested at the workshop were made to the ordinance and sent back to you.
We never received anything back, all I got's the draft from the 30th, and Ken was looking over the weekend, too.
There were two changes that were remaining that you had requested at the meeting, and the planning board discussed those two additional changes and chose to leave the ordinance as is, and that it was up to the council to make changes at the public hearing if so desired. But the majority of the changes were made, it was two items that were left as is. That workshop happened, my recollection is the workshop happened prior to the change in the format of the ordinance, which was to change it by size category.
To me, I like this ordinance, I like the fact that it does scale it based on size. It's more appropriate, easier, smaller projects are easier to approve, and larger scales will do a little more review.
I want to go page by page, just like we did at that work session. On page two, number 12, "The planning board may allow a large-scale solar energy system and see $220,000 square feet under the circumstances where the facility is proposed on extinct gravel operation sites, closing manholes, brownfields, or otherwise disturbed lands seemed appropriate by the planning board. All of the sections of this ordinance could remain applicable." 220,000 square feet, about four and a half acres. And you look at some of these large lots, they're actually, the way it's worded, it's the discretion of the planning board, can make up their own rules with that one. And the one thing I was looking to identify, is when you get farther into this ordinance, there's another section where large scale, utility scale would be a special use permit in light industrial and planned district groundwater overlay district, I don't know how it ended up anywhere. And when you do the research, I think there's 10 lots in town that meet that criteria, only 10. So it's making it more restrictive on that sense right there.
Where do you see that, Lynn?
Which one now? You go down to the very last page, you gotta go in that matrix.
Oh, the matrix, I'm sorry. Oh, the matrix, oh, that's hard to look at.
And there's only eleven, ten or eleven lots zoned that way, where just, where you could do it in the entire town. Page three, we've gone over that numerous times where citing of the, citing of the facility overall, individual panels shall keep the existing contours of the land on a pile driven ballot block or do you? Doesn't always work, work that way. We get on job sites, we have on one site, there was a seven foot hole that the GIS didn't show, stops the job.
So just to clarify, that section that you just read only applies to areas where there is prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. That's not a universal requirement, that's only for specific.
But still, that's what I'm saying, GIS is not actor that these engineers are using.
It's not GIS, it's a soil survey.
So.
That's a, a document that's about that thick.
The old one, I have that one at home, yes. But I'm saying, you're, you're saying, I'm talking about the contours of the land. You know, there's got to be give there. On page four, number eleven, "Calculated square footage of the proposed solar facility, including rows and interspacing between panels to be used to calculate the fee for each stage of review and for calculation of coverage area." I mean, here we are counting the grassy areas between panels as structured for a fee schedule. That's another fee. Another one.
What would you propose there instead?
I would strike out interspacing easily on that one. It very good work. I mean, you're charging someone for.
That's a standard.
Grass, meaning it's a structure?
They're displacing a large amount of acreage. The interspacing is no longer used for subdivision regional function. It's considered as the entire system. That's how the planning was.
How would it be taxed otherwise? Just curious, if it's not, if there's no fee, how would it be taxed? How would it be taxed? How would that property that is not being used solely, they'll be taxed for interspacing?
It's taxed as RU four, if it's under open space, it'll no longer be taxed as RU, as open space where the structure is there.
But it's not open space, it's industrial.
They have to give up the open space.
That's what I just said, it'll be taxed as an RU four lot. If it's open space, it will not be taxed as open space, it'll lose that tax status.
So be industrial.
Still, it'll be, if you have forty acres of RU four, that's not open space.
Right, you're taxing the land and then on the structures themselves, you'll be, the fee would be calculated. Alright, so we remove, um, so number one, "Calculated square footage of a proposed solar facility," how would you say that? Including rows and interspacing. Between panels. Right, okay. So taking out between, including rows and interspacing.
Can I just offer you something on that, just so you're aware?
Yep.
The footprint of the solar facility, when you take out the interspacing and the, the rows between, you've doubled the size of the facility. So if you, I just want you to be aware of what you're doing. That's about what happens when you take out the inter rows and you're not counting those as part of lot coverage. You have effectively doubled the size of the allowable solar facility, just so you're aware of what you're doing.
You're using it for fees for each step in the planning process, correct?
Currently, right now, the fees are calculated based on the area that is occupied by the solar panels and the interspacing. This is just codifying it in the zoning ordinance as part of the ordinance.
If we were to say, like, to calculate the fee, only the square footage of the, uh, panels shall be calculated. That way it's only the feet, the panels get to calculate the fee, but then for the square footage, we can still use the interspacing.
That, I mean, that's your prerogative, just the way that the planning board has looked at this is that this is the entire area that is, is, we're talking about a few rings as you, as you look at a project. You're talking about the area that's actually cleared because they have to have a buffered area where they can clear the trees back so that there's no shading of the facility. Then there's a fenced area and then there's the panels and the interspacing inside that fenced area. The planning board looks at everything inside that fenced area as the facility. It is an entire facility, it is displacing any other use of the property and that is what the planning board looks at as the project itself. And that is what they have based the fees on, is the project area, everything inside that fence. When you take out the inter rows and the spacing between the panels, you double this, on average, you about double the size of the solar facility. So if you're talking about fifteen percent lot coverage and you exclude inter rows and spacing, now you're looking at about thirty percent lot coverage.
But if we only reviewed, what if we only reviewed interspacing for the calculation of the fee for the applications?
Right now, I'm just, right now, the planning board looks at what's inside the fence as the facility itself and that is what they're basing the fees on. This ordinance draft has that codified in the ordinance itself.
I have a better idea. It's based on megawatts.
Megawatts change with technology. We're looking at, this is a plan, the planning board looks at this as a land use issue. We don't care what they produce in megawatts, that's not our issue. We're not buying and selling the electricity with them. We're looking at this as the footprint on the ground, what is the land use? What are the impacts on the neighborhood based on that land use? And they've calculated a fee based on the size of the area that these occupy. We don't, we, the first approach, we did look at, you know, how the energy was sold. Who is it going to? Are you using it on site, are you not using it on site? And we've walked away from that approach and that, that is something that's been discussed beyond just looking at it in Exeter as part of the stakeholder groups that's looking at it statewide. The discussion has, has heavily been, this is a land use issue at the local level in zoning ordinances and it needs to be addressed as such. We don't know what the private relationships are between buying and selling the power and how much is generated and who's the recipient of that power. We're looking at this as a land use issue, that's the planning board's job.
When you do a subdivision, say twenty houses, is it based on the entire project or per lot?
Per lot.
So, that's what I'm saying, same thing, do by megawatt.
The planning board is not in favor of, of changing back. We've moved away from that for a reason. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to base it on power generation. That's not what the planning board looks at, we look at land use. We look at how much space you occupy, how much drainage you create, what is your impact on neighbors? Do you have traffic or no traffic? Those are the items that we look at and those are all based on a physical footprint, not about, you know, that would be like basing our fees on how many people live in a house and we don't do that. It's not what we look at. We've intentionally moved away from it.
I, I'd just like to comment because obviously, this is not my daily work and I appreciate the fact that the planning board has spent so much time, years, a year plus, trying to, trying to define, redefine, come up with this. So my question is, and then I, and I, I marvel at the concept and the fact that there must be spacing between panels. And so I would assume, as you seem to be, the board seems to be assuming, that it has to be part of the project because the project doesn't seem to be able to go forward without the spaces in between. And if a house had to have a detached garage and you had to have space between it because of some regulation you created, it would still be, have to be part of a project because you require a detachment, but it still needs space. So I would think the same concept would apply. But I'm not the professional here, I'm just trying to figure this out. And I would say that we don't want to include the spaces between, that don't have the spaces between. Except from what I understand, the spaces are essential to the operation. I mean, that's my simplistic way to look at it, but then you're the professional. So am I missing something?
No.
You missed one thing, Serge. You missed that if you were building a premium for a house and the building department and the tax assessor were taxed and the building permit is based on square footage, so if the house was not attached to the garage, you wouldn't get, you wouldn't pay a fee for the two in between each other, you would pay for the house a total fee and you would pay for the garage a total fee and the rest is the land.
I, I think.
For example, I understand, I'm not the developer here.
Counsel, I have a suggestion. So for the number thirteen, eleven, so this sentence, "Only when calculating the fee for each stage shall the calculated square footage of a proposed solar facility include rows. And for the calculation of the coverage area, it shall include the interspacing as well." So that way, when you're talking about coverage area, you get the interspacing, you're talking about the fee that you charge for review to the planning board, it only includes the panels.
That's what I would say.
That's acceptable, I think.
Only when calculating the fee for each stage, shall the calculated square footage of the proposed solar facility include only panels. And for the calculation of the coverage area, it shall include the interspacing as well. So that way, when they do the coverage area, they look at the interspacing, which is, would I should say, like that inner circle over there? Things around the fence?
Mm-hmm.
That counts the coverage area, but when you're doing the fee, we're saying, alright, the fee that you have to pay is only on the actual panel, not on the grass or the place in between.
So is that a good compromise?
I mean, it's more for us, I mean, you guys are.
When we get to the next page, it's going to bite you, so.
Alright, let's see what the next one is then.
It's complicated, so.
Alright.
Page five, uh, line up. "In view of fulfillment of the requirements in this section, planning board shall have the authority to require the following: adjustments to both location of solar energy facility determined to be necessary to mitigate negative impacts to adjacent properties or impact to the general public through loss of scenic business and/or cultural and/or historic character." And this is what's been going on through all these drafts. It keeps reverting, giving the planning board all the power. And you sit here, you're basically, you're going to just sit here and just keep hammering that someone that putting these proposals before you. The same thing, number two, provision of additional landscaping beyond the minimum requirements of this section in the Towns Land Development and Subdivision Regulations where such is necessary to mitigate negative impacts to adjacent properties or prominent view sheds or due to the unique characteristics of the subject property. Like I said, once again, you're proposing an ordinance, but you're leaving this open, they can come and say, we want more or you're not going any farther. Get this G on the same page. "Ground mounted solar facilities, a lot pursuant to this section, shall occupy no more than fifteen percent of the parcel on which they are located, which is to include inter row and panel collector spacing." Now, once again, we're taking the grassy strip in between the panels, now that's being considered the whole structure.
Right, just for the coverage area.
But this is where, if they're going in, you've got a hundred acres, you're limited to fifteen acres, including the interspacing. And I don't know, I can't, I don't know what the calculations are on, on solar panels, how many make a megawatt, so. It's, you, you just, you just keep chipping away. Basically, it's where, we don't want any solar in this town is what this whole word is saying.
If I can offer you some insight about the, the comments that you're making in the sections that you're looking at. The planning board responded to what they were hearing from a majority of vocal residents, which is that we have a, a conflict of uses. We have an industrial use in a residential neighborhood. So the planning went, board went back to the ordinance and broke it down by size and also made smaller projects easier, those are less impactful on residential neighborhoods and made larger projects have stricter requirements and a longer, more in detail review process. And also, in the case of utility scale, restricted those to industrially zoned land. This was, it was intentional to do this on the part of the planning board because we continually kept hearing that residential properties should not have utility scale solar. There's plenty of opportunity with small scale, medium scale and large scale in residential districts and the ability of the planning board to recognize that we may have properties in those residential zones that would lend themselves better to a utility scale and gave flexibility to the planning board. You're calling it a restriction, we see it as flexibility to address the concerns we heard about having these next to homes being properly buffered, every site being different. Flexibility was given to the planning board in both directions, to allow for things outside of the ordinance and to ask for more information or more than what the ordinance requires, which is no different than the planning board subdivision regulations. If you look at those in multiple locations, it says, this is a minimum requirement and that the planning board has the ability to request more information and require additional buffering, additional site plan review. It's, it's not a new concept that the planning board has the flexibility to go in either direction of, of where the, the regulations are written.
So what, what you're saying is, you just said, and the person who spoke earlier about having to see something next door to their property. So when you break down like you did on page one with all of the, by, uh, all of the five, the building mounted, small scale, medium scale, large scale, utility scale. So these people have been looking at in their Navy job also, so we complain about that too. So you have, other people now have a solar, solar facility in their land, now they're getting a plane next door that they can see the solar, solar facility.
Well, I think that would be possible under the current regulations. The idea with this regulation is to give the planning board the ability to prevent that from happening. The current regulation doesn't allow the planning board to say, you need extra screening on the northern side of your, of your proposed facility because, you know, the trees there are insufficient or the homes are too close to you. The idea was that this ordinance would give the ability to have that flexibility to have the planning board say, you know, the north side of the property needs additional screening than that thirty foot vegetated buffer that's written into the ordinance. But if it's not a, if it's not needed for any specific purpose, the planning board cannot just arbitrarily place conditions on applications. They're, they're held to requirements that they have to be reasonable. Uh, if not, we're going to, we're going to get overturned by the zoning board and possibly sued in court for it. The planning board's not looking to say, you know, arbitrarily, we're going to add buffers where they're not needed or we're going to make, you know, applicants do things that are unnecessary. The idea was that every site is different, every area is going to be different. Neighbors are going to be able to see things differently. You may be too close to a road where it's a scenic highway and things can be seen and we want to protect that scenic vista, so we're going to ask for additional landscaping requirements in that area. If we're not in a situation like that and you can't see it from the road, there'd be no reason to ask for additional buffering. The planning board would have no basis to do that. This ordinance gives us the ability to, to adjust it on a case by case basis.
The answer to the megawatts is three point two five megawatts. The hundred acres with the lot coverage of fifteen percent would give you three point two five megawatts on a acre. It works out to be about four acres per megawatt, um, not taking in.
That includes the interspacing?
Includes interspacing.
One thing I have, page eight, "Small-scale solar energy facility. A solar energy system that occupies sixteen hundred square feet or period or less inclusive of interspacing and collecting." And we go back to requirements in your definition. "All small-scale solar facilities are required to apply for development plan review in accordance with section two point five of the zoning ordinance. In addition to the requirements found in section two point five, all applicable requirements under eleven point one AC of this section shall apply." Sixteen hundred square feet, forty foot by forty foot. So are they gonna go back to the planning board for approval on this also?
Development plan review can be one meeting before the planning board, if needed. And the zoning ordinance currently says that anything that is not a single-family home is required to have development plan review. So this is consistent with that current requirement.
What does this become, an accessory use?
If it's something that's used for the power generation for the house, I would imagine he would consider it an accessory use. But you're allowed to have accessory uses with no primary use right now per the zoning official. So you wouldn't even need to have a house on the property. You could just put up a solar facility.
On page six, the one that really got me is Section eleven point one point B, procedural requirements, building mounted solar energy facilities. Number three. "All building mounted solar energy facilities adjacent to a scenic highway, local or state designated, shall place the solar panels and aperture structures out of the view shed from the scenic highway where possible." Well, we have one scenic highway in town, Route one oh two, right out here. And that's south. If you live on this side of the road, the same side the Calvin lives on, you wouldn't be able to put solar on your rooftop because you could see the solar panel from the road.
Says where possible.
Says where possible. The planning board had that discussion and did not want to prohibit it from happening, but is saying where it's possible not to have that. That's the preference.
I mean, a lot of this is only reaching, is my problem, so.
I would say, just because it is, the scenic highway we have is one oh two. And if you're on, the house right in Cal, you probably just got parked again, Cal. All those houses you can see on one oh two, you will see them because they'll be on the south side of the property, which is your side.
But if you went across the street, it'd be on the backside. You won't see them, so.
I would say, why don't we strike Section three from the ordinance?
But it says where possible.
He said, the last word is where possible.
Also, you need to put this into context of what's required for review here. You just go get a building permit. You're not going before the planning board. They don't have the ability to deny you because you're not putting it on, away from the scenic view. These are just building mounted. There's no planning board review. It's a by right application in every zoning district. As the resident will use Cal again, he can go get a building permit, putting them on the south side. It just says where possible. You can change the shall to a should.
So that's on that line.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this issue. My home should not be part of this conversation. It's not the reason I am concerned. But I will tell you that I support the efforts of the planning board. I'll tell you why. I've sat here, as many of you know, and some of you say, far too long. But through the history of my being seated here, I've seen previous planning boards come through with ordinance revisions that changed original regulations that they proposed, which we adopted, then suggested there needed to be modifications to make it more reasonable. I see developments in town with boulevard streets. They're beautiful, but subsequently, others argued with these new developments, if they didn't need to be boulevard-sized, they were more difficult to maintain. Wasn't exactly the rural character that we had through our-
Excuse me, we'd like to have one person speaking at a time because we'd like to hear-
I'm used to that, but thank you for speaking.
How rude.
Well, I'm used to that. My point is that on existing roads like Willow Suite or Hallville, they've been there forever, so we're not widening them. New developments were thought to be different. Now, new developments have another concept. Let's go back to solar. I sat through some of the planning board discussions and work sessions, and I watched these people interact and argue with one another and come up with more regulatory, oh, that's too regulatory, it's too much regulation. I thought that back and forth was professional and constructive, and I appreciate that after seven other tries, they've come back here with something that's very different from the others. I give you credit, I thank you for your work. Clearly, others see this differently than I do, but I just wanna tell you where I'm coming from has nothing to do with my home on a scenic highway. Thank you. And I have been approached by at least four different solar companies asking if I wouldn't like to consider. Well, initially, I thought, gee, maybe, until I began to see the consequences, the issues involved, I backed away. So you won't see it on my house or my property.
So for the council, what would you like to do for number three? Frank? Greg? All right, so we'll strike Section three of that.
We're not in full agreement, just in case you weren't. But majority rules. Kevin, it's all right. You're doing the very best you can.
So strike three complete.
Do you need a motion for that?
Well, I think we're not there yet. Does any more discussion from the council before we open to the public, just any comments? All right. All right, first person that signed up for public comment is Gina Thern.
Hello again, this is Gina Thern. Good evening. You've all heard me speak previously, supported solar in Exeter. All of Exeter. I believe that solar should be attainable for both residential properties as well as larger landowners, and is an excellent source of renewable energy as well as a means of providing financial stability to a landowner while at the same time preventing more land from being developed into house lots. That said, I do have some concerns about draft date. The original ordinance had as its stated purpose to promote solar in Exeter. This draft has changed that to regulate. I'm not comfortable with that. I think there's a lot of regulating that's unnecessary. I'm gonna go page by page as well. On page one, under general requirements, number three, maximum height to be set at twelve feet for solar arrays. This is a decrease of three feet from the original ordinance, and effectively removes the ability of a farmer to utilize the land under a solar array to produce a crop. If a major concern is loss of farmland to agricultural production, why make it harder for them to farm? At a twelve-foot maximum height, the bottom edge of the solar panel would be about thirty inches off the ground. Pretty short, but I can't walk under that either. Reducing the availability of the space under the panel to less than half that would be potentially usable and severely limiting the choice of potential crops. Page two to three, end of page two into page three. Section sixteen A. Solar arrays on farmland must have plants selected from URI's native plant database under them. That effectively eliminates most vegetable crops and limits you to, I don't know, stinging nettles, mushrooms, a couple other woodland plants that have a very limited market. You're trying to encourage farming. Removing options that can be farmed isn't conducive to encouraging farming. You also reference in that same section, sixteen C, preference for pollinator-friendly. What kind of pollinators are you trying to attract? Native pollinators. I guess I should remind people that honeybees are not native to America. They came from Europe in the sixteen hundreds. Page four, Section thirteen A. Again, low growth vegetation must be from the native plant database. Again, eliminating most agricultural crops. In Section D. Screening must be native vegetation that matches the surrounding habitat. What if a farmer wanted to use the required fencing surrounding a solar array to trellis cucumbers, or beans, or hops, or any other climbing variety of plant? Is that permissible? Or does that go against your native plant database or screening? Could they use ivy, Virginia creeper, some other viney crop? Or just a bunch of arborvitae's that deer are gonna eat anyway? By limiting to the plant database, you remove a bunch of commercially viable crops that could be successfully farmed around a solar array. Page five, Section G dash one. Fifteen percent of lot coverage. Personally, I believe that including the inter-row spacing is excessive when you're looking at permeable surface. The fifteen percent lot coverage requirement was originated to look at coverage and making surfaces unpermeable. And solar arrays do not make the surface unpermeable. Page six, Section one. Solar facilities on a scenic roadway should be out of view shed. Mr. Patterson, you brought up my point. If it's on the south side of the road, please hit. Personally, I find that to be a backdoor ban on residential solar. Under definitions, large scale, limiting to a maximum of two hundred twenty thousand square feet or under five acres, including inter-row spacing. This puts you in a sticky area of being just under, maybe just at one megawatt, the threshold for a developer to justify a project. Therefore, it needs to be entirely landowner-financed. Since most of the landowners are land-rich and cash-poor, the reason they're looking at solar in the first place, that would effectively ban solar for them and force them to develop it in house lots or sell it. Mr. McGovern, you stated at the last public hearing that you thought this would help farms. I think as a banker, you can do the math. If a farmer can't get a developer to finance a project, and they can't afford to put a project on the ground, you force them to bankruptcy. Point eight, the net metering. The original ordinance had exemption for net metering in solar arrays for both residential and utility-scale projects. That has been removed entirely from this draft. I wonder if the residents of the town realize that by letting this go forward, it will be harder for them to have solar project for their house approved? What about a business? How about Yadhuski? RE2 zoning. Couple hundred acres of land. High electrical usage, especially in the winter when ski laws. A net metering system, they certainly have plenty of land that they could pick a chunk, and the only people that would see it would be the skiers. If they didn't wanna see it, they don't have to ski there. They can have a net metering system under the previous ordinance, or ordinance that is currently on the books, and address their electrical usage. Under this, can they have anything? Certainly not anything big enough to address the amount of electrical usage that they use as a business. Because what they would use as a business would fall into that utility scale range. Sorry, I hope we don't support your business. Overall, in the document, I mean, pet peeve of mine, I used to be a teacher, please proofread. Typographical errors, relief, don't raise my faith in the work. And also throughout the document, final decisions are not obtained by meeting a set-out criteria, but by the whim of the planning board. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. A good ordinance removes subjectivity, not increases it, and it's attainable through due diligence. The applicant follows all of the processes set forth in the ordinance. And in this, the way this is written, it goes back to, and the planning board may change, and the planning board may, and the planning board may. There's no benchmark. There's no clear cut, this is what you need to do. It's subjective. It's subjectively written. And while the planning board may have listened to the concerns of some of the town members, apparently, they are not listening to the concerns of others. The farmers and some of the landowners that are looking at bigger projects to try to save their land. There's no compromise here, only more restrictions. In a town that was built by farmers and businessmen and women, this is a slap in the face. When I moved here, I believe Exeter supported agriculture and its agricultural roots. Part of why I chose to live in this town. I don't think that's the case anymore. It's not the eighteen hundreds, it's not the sixteen hundreds. We don't farm the same way, nor will we ever. Times change, technology changes. If you want people to go back to that, why don't you go visit Sturgis Village? Or better yet, go work there for a day, and get up at sunup, and go to sleep at sundown, and see what that life was like. And then come and work on one of our farms for a day. Get up at three o'clock in the morning to go pick sweet corn. And then come home and deliver a produce order. And then go to a farmer's market. And then come to a town council meeting, for whatever time this takes tonight. And get up at three o'clock in the morning again tomorrow to go pick more corn. Maybe then, you will appreciate the work that we do for you. Heard a lot of people concerned about saving trees and clearcutting a lot of land. Could've saved a lot of trees, I'm taking this as a friend. Thank you.
Next, we have Lauren Thern.
Hello. Yellow half of the deal. Five-five-five Goddard Road, Hockets Farm. Wanna reiterate the points that my wife has already made. I agree with her on them. So I was, you know, it appears the planning board has made an attempt to add a compromise, quick look. But I do feel, when you really dig into it, it's not a compromise. Two hundred twenty square feet, two hundred twenty thousand square feet, which they put in roughly five acres. Planning board has already commented that counting inter-row spacing doubles the size needed. So we're looking at about two and a half acres of actual panels. Again, is that gonna be enough for the developer to look at putting in a project? You know, we can't afford to do it ourselves. And if they can't justify it, they're not gonna happen. Appears to be essentially a backdoor ban. Couple other things I'd like to go through, and then do the same thing, start going through line by line. Some of them, housekeeping, some of them questions I'd like to have better explained. Start on page one, line forty. It's Section C, number eight. Ground-mounted solar, ground-mounted scaled solar. What is scaled solar? I question what that is really referring to. Section C in general is giving general requirements. It references both building-mounted solar and ground-mounted solar. Go to page two, line forty-three, number nine. Parking and circulation. Applicants shall demonstrate the adequate access of parking, access to parking provided, service emergency vehicles. If you put solar on your house, are you gonna have to have proof of adequate access and parking? Or is something missing in this? It seems to be referencing ground mount, but it does not say that. And I will say the same thing about number eleven at line fifty-one, number thirteen at line sixty-six, number fourteen at line seventy-five. All these things are putting in requirements that leave me to say, for a house-mounted? Go back up to line fifty-four. Solar installation shall maintain a thirty-foot staggered vegetated buffer. We've heard the town planner and planning board members mention that the entire facility is what's within the fenced area. As we're talking about inter-row spacing. We're not talking about the space that's only in between rows, but all around them, because you're not gonna put the fence up against the solar panels. Is this thirty-foot also gonna be part of the solar array, a solar facility? Because like Congressman Patterson said, a sixteen hundred square foot array is forty foot by forty foot. If we're counting a thirty-foot buffer around it, that leaves us a ten-foot square in the middle to put solar. That doesn't seem like a practical size to put in. Line seventy-five, number fourteen. Solar energy facilities and associated equipment shall not be allowed on land held under conservation easement for land which development rights have been sold. So farms sells their development rights, they have a barn that they wish to put solar on the roof. This prohibits it. Is that something that council really wishes to do?
It doesn't prohibit it.
Solar energy facilities and associated equipment shall not be allowed on land held under- shall not be allowed on land held under conservation easement of while land or which development rights have been sold. Transferred.
Land, not a structure.
Land, not structures, land. All of these elements that you're reading from are the general requirements.
If you want it to be ground mount, stated in it.
You don't have to get upset. I'm just trying to clarify for you that these are the general requirements of the ordinance.
Don't get upset when somebody butted in.
I'm trying to answer your questions. You don't have to be angry with me.
Ma'am.
Sir?
Yes. Continue on, it's going to be page three, is part of number sixteen. It's going to be line ninety-four. I'm sorry. That one... No, that was addressed, I'm sorry. Line ninety-eight. Again, provide above as I proposed, planning board will sign University Round's native plant database. Is any other development in this town being required to use native plants only? Or are we permitted to just do landscaping at all the developments? And that one is listed again, and line one fifty-nine, native vegetation. And yes, thank you for addressing. Line two twenty-four regarding scenic highways. I believe that was a major affront to residential solar. To go back to the matrix on the back page. Noticing open space public land is a no all the way through. As I've looked at the current ordinance, I realize this is a continuation of what's already there. As I'm trying to look at the zoning map, looking at open space public plan, it looks like a lot of state-owned land, nature conservancy, Audubon land. If these facilities, I've seen some of them have, what is it, solar composting toilets. Are those prohibited in Exeter now? Because that is something that, in my take on this, is completely prohibited.
That would be considered building-mounted.
And accessory building-mounted is a no in open space public land.
So change it to an S or a yes?
That's what I'm...
That's a concern.
That is what I'm requesting, is that it be considered. Just some rough figures here. We've heard the magic figure so many times of a megawatt for a developer to make it worthwhile to do a, come in and do a project. And four to six acres to make it, to do a megawatt. If we start going to requiring interrow spacing to be counted, I mean, now looking at that four acre is becoming eight acres, six acres becoming twelve acres. At a fifteen percent lot coverage, we're now looking at fifty-three to eighty acres. Have a lot large enough to consider doing large-scale solar on it? I feel like this has actually become a greater hindrance to people being able to solar in this town rather than the compromise that it initially looks like. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Malara.
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Scott Malara, the line two forty-seven Stony Lane. I'm also a member of the state stakeholder group that's working on solar model guidance, which more or less a model ordinance. I have looked at quite a few model ordinance across the state and I strongly support the ordinance that's been proposed by the planning board. From what I've seen, I believe it's one of the best, if not the best, that's being proposed at this time. The ordinance will allow all landowners in Exeter to benefit from having some solar on their land instead of just a few per the green development ordinance that recently passed. And I think it's important to note that many solar developers specialize in projects that are forty thousand square feet and less. So landowners will not be deprived of having access to solar in the event this ordinance is adopted. In fact, it's just the opposite. More landowners will have access to solar if this ordinance is passed. The ordinance establishes reasonable limits for the size of solar development. I think that's an excellent provision. And has appropriate standards to ensure that development not negatively impact other property values and owners. I think that's also extremely important. Frankly, I trust and respect the judgment of the Exeter planning board to execute appropriate discretion that's outlined here. I really think that's the way to go. The opposite way to write an ordinance is to have very detailed standards that are non-negotiable. And in some cases, those standards may not be applicable. So this is giving the planning board the discretion to do what's right, to make sure that there is appropriate screening for a particular facility instead of requiring, which could be very burdensome requirements, that might be excessive. So I think this is a very innovative and progressive approach that they're proposing. The planning board's ordinance is significantly more protective of very important property rights than green development's ordinance. I think it's important to keep in mind that the Maryland Supreme Court recently ruled utility-scale solar as a manufacturing use. Exeter does not currently allow any industrial or manufacturing uses in residential zones. The planning board could have said, okay, let's not allow any solar. But they didn't do that. I think they very carefully and very thoughtfully tried to come up with a reasonable approach to allow solar that's still consistent with the Exeter comprehensive plan. Therefore, I really urge the Exeter Town Council to adopt the Exeter planning board's ordinance as is and repeal green development's ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Rena Agnew Thomas. Rena, Rena? Stamos.
Ma'am, what? This is my wife Rena, my name is Lee Stamos. We live on one forty-eight Mail Road. Mr. and Mrs. Stone, I think, kind of said everything that I was going to say. I'd just like to add a couple of things to it. Then, I think you're doing a great job trying to get through all this and, you know, with everything going on, I know it's not easy. My concern is number eight. We have a hundred and twenty acres. And with, you know, thinking about doing a solar farm. From the way that I understand this, with my hundred and twenty acres, I only could do, and if you take out the house, the four acres for the house, I'm only allowed to do seventeen acres. That's really not enough to do the project. It's not worthwhile. That's my biggest concern. We have other options, but we really don't want to go with those other options. So...
We are not, I can talk too.
Yeah.
We're not part of the fifteen that are...
We're not part of green development.
No, we just, you know, hope that...
So my, one of my questions for the planning board is, does that limit me, the way, if this was approved, am I only allowed seventeen acres?
Or would they look at it?
I think they would have to look at your specific...
I'd have to, specifically, we'd have to look at your site. But it's a, the way it's proposed in here is that it's a fifteen percent lot coverage. Because that is the lot coverage for a residential district. And the planning board was trying to keep in mind that these are residentially-zoned land. And that if you were, if you were building any other type of facility on your residentially-zoned land, you would be restricted to a fifteen, eighteen, fifteen percent lot coverage. So they carried the lot coverages through on every zoning district. So residential districts remained at fifteen percent and the light industrial and the business district remained at twenty-five percent.
We are RU4, but we were approached by, is it Oak Harbor Route Two? We have bought that property. Our wetlands, actually, which is, we can't do anything with, but them. Now, they have a whole development in there. You know, my kids used to walk to the ice cream store through the woods, you know, when it first went up. Where we're proposing to put this, it does, we can't see it from my house. The street can't see it. No neighbor can see it. And at Butts, there's an area that would be wetlands and then there's the develop, where they want to put the solar. So would you be able, is it a flat fifteen percent? Or would they say, okay, we could take this, a special permit because this doesn't...
This is argued for.
...buy any neighbor. It doesn't show from the street. I mean, is there any kind of...
The ordinance says...
Is it flexible or just total regulation of this fifteen percent?
The ordinance says that it's fifteen percent because the residential zoning district requires a fifteen percent. Every dimensional requirement in the zoning ordinance is allowed to be requested to be, for relief granted. So you have, there is always a relief valve for particular issues. If you need a variance for your side yard setback, you can go to the zoning board and request relief. If you want relief from the lot coverage requirement, you can go to the zoning board and request relief. There's always a relief valve from requirements of the zoning ordinance.
See, and again, I know you guys have been working really hard.
The planning board could say no.
The planning board doesn't have the authority, the zoning board has the authority.
Instead of your particular project, what other concerns you have about this ordinance or...
Well, they could just flat out, they could say no. They could, they could say no. And my neighbors are all, I'm far enough away from them. They're all, you know, I...
We had a meeting.
We had fifteen acres, we sent out a notice and had a meeting with our neighbors to let them know what we were doing. Didn't want to be underhand, they just want to bring it right out there on the table to see how they felt about it. And, you know, so my choices were to, you know, to do something like this, use up, say, thirty-five acres or so. Or I put a road straight down the middle and do something else. I'd rather do this and still have seventy acres of my paradise, you know, to do, to do what I want with. As far as my hunting, my harvesting, and I've got fields back there. You know, and then the only other thing I'd like to add is sixty percent of my woods from the gypsy mords I've won. So where I propose to put this solar farm is going to take care of all those trees and take those trees down. If I don't do this solar project, I gotta pay to take those trees down. I called up DM, asked if there's any relief fund or any FEMA or anything like that. There's nothing, there's absolutely nothing. So I have to, you know, basically get a wood cutter in there and, because it's a fire hazard. So it's, you know, but again, we've got options. But this, I think would be the best option for, you know, for our fair. And I just don't feel that someone should just say flat out no because this is what the zoning, yes, you can put in a request, but... You know, you have one neighbor that complains and it's going to shut you down. Anything else you put that?
No, no, I just, I just, I just feel it's being restrictive. Where, even though we are in an RU4, we have, we don't have neighbors. We live on Mail Road, it's like this. We don't, it is, it's scary pulling out of Mail Road. We're not in a residential neighborhood. I think if they could look at piece, each individual piece...
Each individual piece should be different.
And regulate it that way. Don't put it on that woman's, you know, property lot, you know? Yeah, like let them look at it at each individual piece.
The ordinance in place denies...
That's correct, the zoning board.
Can I talk about a couple of ground rules, please? Because I know everybody's had a nice discussion and it's very civil and applaud you all. But the way these work is, these hearings, this is the town council's hearing. So the questions or the comments all have to be addressed here. Ashley, although you're trying to be helpful, Tom, trying to answer people's questions. But if the council has questions, they will ask everybody else. You can't just jump in and answer people's questions for them when they're presenting something to the town council.
Understood.
And that's also when everybody stands up, please try to do that. Address your comments only to the town council. If the council feels that someone else needs to address it later on in the hearing, then the council will act.
We, we said what we wanted to say and asked, asked the questions that we needed to ask.
We think...
If you guys have any questions for us, if you have any answer...
I'd just like to say a word to you.
Yep.
I understand, I understand your concern, you have a large piece of property. You want to do something with it that wouldn't ordinarily fit within our traditional regulations.
But right now, it would fit into you.
No, but what I'm saying is that the whole solar array arrival situation is something that none of us, none of the board has anticipated. But I think what's happened with zoning board, the zoning board in the past, and I've not been part of that, but I do know that sometimes people have come before the board on solar issues, not yet, although there are some, I think, on the horizon. But you could come forward, let's say you want a large, you want a variance like was suggested, you could, you could request. And then there's a public hearing before the zoning board. If you've approached your neighbors, as you say you have, and they understand what you're doing and what the alternative might be, the zoning board might grant, I'm not saying they would. And even if one neighbor, you said one person could shut you down. I know of situations where the zoning board has considered applications where someone has raised a concern, has objected, but the zoning board has gone along with the path. It might have been in the best interest of the party that's applied. So it wouldn't automatically be a shutdown. I mean, I can't say I don't sit on the board. This is a whole new solar, introducing solar where you would have introduced ten houses, for example, something different. But it, but it's a whole new approach that I think everybody's trying to work their way through. But there are no, there's no definite, definitive answer for that. We can't tell you that the zoning board might approach your request. Sorry.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom McMillan.
Thank you, if I could have a brief moment of your attention. I simply hope that this public hearing has the purpose of serving the town and the people of Exeter. And that you will give objective consideration, have some hostility. Council would have an opportunity here to reverse a hugely divisive, unpopular decision that's being described as many in the town as a betrayal. Or you may leave that in place and leave the matter up to the many vocal unhappy voters who feel abused, who feel unable to find any basis for the decision you have made or any basis to support that or your term in office. So I would hope you would approach this with the responsibility to the town and give it due consideration.
Evelyn Weller.
As the council members, I live on Stony Road, actually. I've lived in Exeter with my husband Jeffrey since nineteen seventy-four. I moved here April first. I've been here a long time. We have twenty-one acres. I, we are a butter with one of the projects that is on the books with Green Falaba. We're the only, really, only a butter to that project besides Route 102. I want to say clearly that I think we're all on the same side, but we're acting like we're adversaries. All the ordinances that have ever been written in this town have been written by the town. I can't comprehend why an ordinance was written for our town by a developer. It's just unconscionable to me. We have all sorts of ordinances, they've all come down through the town. The town has worked them through and worked them out, as far as I know. What is disturbing to me about the green development plan is that the butters don't have a say. And I've been in discussion with green development because I talk to them because I want to be a good neighbor to the solar plan, whatever that solar plan is going to be. And within that discussion, I tried to voice my concern that I thought the setback was not big enough, not far enough away from the property boundary. And I was told, no, that's what it's going to be, that's the plan. Okay, fine. And then in the midst of that conversation, I asked, well, what, aren't there any requirements of an equivalent? What is going to happen? How are we going to be good neighbors over these twenty-five years, if I live that long? Or my, whoever lives on that property after I'm long gone? Or my, whoever lives on that property after I'm long gone? And I was, well, probably the only thing that we might ask of you is to cut the tops of the trees off that may shade the panels. Well, I don't know about you, but that's, to me, is stepping over the line on what is required to be a good neighbor. It speaks to the fact that they are admitting that the setback is not far enough away. If they are concerned that my trees are going to cast a long shadow on the, on the panels, then they ought to set back the project so that my trees don't interfere. I shouldn't be required to lop off the top of my trees to accommodate their utility industrial solar project. Other thing I want to mention is that when we did the zoning in this town, many of the landowners who owned sizable parcels fought for the zoning to keep the rural nature of this town. We gave up willingly our right to develop our properties. We gave it because we believed in the rural nature of this town. If we're going to have solar, and I do agree with this, the Farneck family here, we do want farms. And we should make the solar friendly to the farms. But also, we have to take into consideration the people that bought in residential areas and gave up willingly the development rights to have our two, our three, our four. You know, that was a big deal back then for those landowners. And I, I feel like not working together, when I see the divisiveness and people getting upset and angry, I want to call him Mr. Rogers because we're a neighborhood here. We're the neighbors. And when I, you know, and I see us divisive, but we all want the same things. We want the same thing. We want our planning board to write an ordinance that we all can live with. And it's a living document. It's not stamped forever because we live in a democracy and we could all come back to the table if something's not working. So I wish we'd stop being contrarian and start being, yeah, neighbors. And start talking together like we all care about what's happening in this town to each other with this solar thing. And no, I don't want to hear people interrupting other people, talking over other people and, and attitudes of, and rolling eyes and all that crap. Let's come to the table like adults and let's do the job as neighbors. And yes, you have concerns that should be addressed. And yes, she shouldn't have to almost be to the point of tears to express them. And I don't see the planning board as being unapproachable. So God bless everyone. I'm not cutting off the tops of my beloved trees. Okay, I'm just not going to do it. And if they're shading the Andrews project, my good neighbor's project, and I want it to succeed and do well at that, I am for solar. And I'm on 102 on the south side, so I might want to put some on my barn roof someday. But I have to tell you that he's got to push it back further if he doesn't want my trees to shade it. And then I'll be a good neighbor to that solar project. And I can plant whatever trees I want, so I don't have to stare at it every day when I'm on my deck. No one else is going to see it except us, all the way up the side of our property. Thank you very much. I need the confidence that we'll all get together with our planning board, do the right thing. Let's use the function of our own town government and keep outsiders out. They're not, they're not going to live here. We are. Let's be good neighbors and do a good job. Ask something that we can all live with. And let's all know it's a living document, like our constitution's a living document. God bless America.
Well, we were here earlier. I think my biggest complaint was that if you go back to solar five, RU fours were, were okay. They need a special permit. Now we're on solar rate and RU four needs a, a special permit. One other thing I want to mention is that the report I did forty years ago for the, for the Department of Energy, Resolved Energy, and you have an obligation, American citizen, for your energy consumption and conservation. I just finished a house in the federal government, took the appliances, the furnace, the windows and doors, the lights and insulation. Then it was tested physically for air infiltration, then computer modeled the comparison to an energy efficient home in Colorado. Under my name here is the name of the father, the current governor of, uh, Governor of Hampshire. We just said that Hampshire was going to be a filling station for Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Meaning in the future, embargoes may not come from oligarchs, but from neighboring states. Our Department of Energy has made standards in the nation's interest in letting green lighting, solar farms. We ask the town council to reject solar rate for these reasons. Thank you.
I was the last person that did sign up for this public hearing. That's the animal shelter. Anything else in the council? So this time I'll move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I'll make a motion to pass the solar ordinance afterwards with the following amendments. That on line eleven, the sentence I previously stated regarding the B schedule, that under eleven-one dot B, A subsection three, be strictly in its entirety. And under the matrix, number sixty-nine, for the accessory building, non-solar facility, open space, public land, that be changed to, from an N to an S for a special years. That is my motion.
Kevin, Mr. President, despite the fact that I applaud the planning board to their product, I must support your motion and second your motion.
So we're motioning to second, there's further discussion from the council. All right, if there are none, I'll call the votes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Pray your vote.
I voted yep.
People guess? The motion does pass. Moving on to new business. The motion passed. Number nine, new business personnel labor negotiations. All right. P, private detective license application for Kevin, a applicant, one point two, reach, drive, X or L. All requirements have met. I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Five seconds.
All in discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ten, post upon storage cemeteries. Nothing new. Stay with you for the impact side.
I received the updated contract agreement, so I'll send that out by email. We have to definitely have a social contract. Can we do a special meeting to adopt this? Right, so I know you want to ask special meeting to adopt this document.
We can have a special meeting to adopt it. Maybe do that, maybe the work session afterwards. You know, maybe it'll be discussed.
Can I, can I just raise a point of information? I'm sorry, I have a little problem functioning here. Thank you. But I thought we had decided to hold a work session on the twentieth. But I, I noticed here on the calendar, it's posted, at least here, as a special meeting. It was supposed to be when I saw this. It is a work session.
So do we want to have that, just a special meeting on the twentieth first and then a work session subsequent? Would that work?
Or if you want, we, we were told that we could have a consultant come in and talk to the council. If you ask questions about the document, you know, about the solar services, we can bring them in on the twentieth and vote in October. But it's really basic. We were going with this, this is my alternative that we have.
Okay, so let me, can I ask a question here, please? Let me understand, Ken, you, you're at a point, if I understand correctly, where you think you're ready to advise us based on your meeting and the meetings of the department and I'd say our managers, that what, what we're going to be presented, it's what we should go for. Did you want to give it to us, talk to us, and let us approve it? Or do you think, is it more urgent? Do you think that we get a moving on this one?
Jim needs to review the legal pieces, because it is a contract, but it's their contract too. So that's why Jim definitely has to review. They get a speed back on it. But the projects itself are being picked. That was where we went with the common.
Right, right.
And he chose, um, basements. Right, those are things that you read document and you say you want to have a work session. Let's have a work session, ask them if they want to come down, which they said they would, from Maryland.
But you think we're in a good, we're in a good place to be able to move forward to accomplish what we need to do?
So once I send it to Maria to speak, and then even then, see what results were of that meeting we had. And it's really basic on that part.
Are you, are you already, I'm sorry, but are you doing it now or are you waiting until we see it before you?
I just received it, so I didn't have a chance to view the whole thing.
Okay. But when you say Jim needs to review, are you, are you going to pass it along to have it before we?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, we'll all have it too. I'm just trying to make sure and get across that.
So it came in an email, so it's a very good copy, but I don't want to drop it on your last page. So I didn't read it. But maybe two pages, like the scope of service, the rest of all legal, Jim's language.
So can we put it just as a work session or that? And then say October agenda for approval? Does that make sense?
That sounds better.
Does that, does that accommodate what you think? Please, well, that's the same, yeah. So we take care of that and deal with-
So you're just reviewing it on the twentieth and you're going to adopt, possibly adopt- Twenty?
Yeah.
No, not on the first.
So are you going to just review it and discuss it on the twentieth and then possible action on the regular meeting?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
It sounds like it makes sense.
No action on C, D, Information Technology Services?
I sent an email to, uh, both consultants, I never heard response back, so I don't know if he was away. But we're going to get a meeting on this Saturday.
Do you have his cell phone number? If not, I can get it.
Yeah, I emailed him, I didn't want to call him himself.
We're going to meet this Saturday, Mr. President, for the long weekend, I think.
Yeah.
Whether or not the availability, everybody was going to be able to meet.
Okay.
So we're going to shoot for the, uh, the eighth or the fifteenth, right?
Yeah, just keep on going to Saturday.
Right.
Okay. Transfer stations access, executive session?
Yes.
Opposed ordinance, cat and dog breeders permits?
No, school work now.
Okay. Regional School District Finance Committee, you got the email, sorry, from West Greenwich. With their possible dates, tonight, next Monday, whether following Monday. Which date's worse for you guys have a joint meeting? I'm unavailable both days.
I can do, I can do either, repeat the date, maybe the tenth, the seventeenth, or the eleventh is when the building committee is going to be.
We are meeting on the twentieth too, so we have two meetings that same week.
Can we get more dates?
You guys want to get more dates?
I think the sooner the better, right? I agree.
You want to do the seventeenth then, which is like two meetings at a?
That's fine, I mean.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I put this with the finance, this is not the finance.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you were going to represent, aren't you representing?
He's on the building committee. I mean, it's on the eleventh.
This is the one we're trying to, the regional finance committee, if there's your dog, if you like.
Oh, this is a discussion.
Right. All right, so I'll sue the seventeenth then.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not waiting, so.
Seventeenth's good?
Okay. Guard the road issues? E permitted implementation process?
Lori and I met with the representatives from the state. We, we gave them a lot of tweaking to do.
Okay.
We made them, then we went back to review some, and we had it in our books.
Animal shelter study committee report, we have a work session scheduled this the twentieth?
Yes.
Application for remit to the zoning ordinance by Taxi Communications. We sent that over to the planning board, they hear anything back yet?
They do not review it yet, they've stuck underneath.
Okay. You've got it on the agenda? And introduction, consideration, possible action, revision to the order, it's written to the amendment. Out of support collective, we just passed a replacement, so then no action is needed on this. Hold on, I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah, let me explain this. We had an interesting thing happen here tonight. We just passed an ordinance. This was to correct a typographical error in the previous green energy ordinance. Certain applications came in under that ordinance, which would be the ranch bottom recipe. So what you would be doing, you do need to add this because it does have a, it does have a section in it that, or just a one reference, actually, that was an outdated reference. So that needs to be fixed, but it needs to also, in the, when we do the effective date, it needs to be made clear in all words with language with wind. That, that now says that it, it will apply only to those applications that came in from the time of original passage to up to the-
So then I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the ordinance for section fourteen, where it says eleven dot one dot B, change to- where it says 11 dot 1 dot B, change to 6.5.
Right, and that's really for historic purposes, for those who came in, if any, under the, under that particular ordinance during a time of its existence. Just so we're clear. You're not undoing what you just did tonight, right, by revisiting.
By voting yes, but ones that are submitted are grandfathered.
That's, well, that would be the fact anyway.
Right.
The problem is, if we, if we did not pass this, then that one section would have a reference to an outmoded section that had already been basically changed. And that's all, that's all it's been.
We're just changing.
Ashley found, Ashley found that there was a, there was a typographical inadvertent reference in one section. Lynn thought, wondered whether or not it could be done without council action, simply done as an heading. I told her, I was in a bunch of caution, I felt that it needed to be done through a council action because of the way the ordinance talks about revisions to the code. So you need to do that, but again, it does not affect the applicability of the new ordinance. It just requires.
For historic purposes. The application that came in from the time of dispatch until tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
Those that would be grandfathered are grandfathered, not affected.
Could you get a second on that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Actually, do you have a question?
No, I mean, I don't want to confuse the issue. It's about grandfathering, and I don't know that that's purview for this, this part of the discussion, but typically it's the, the applications that are considered substantially complete.
Okay, well, that, that could be an issue. I'm just saying that.
Well, I've already started thinking about how this is all going to work.
All right, I don't, all I'm saying is that if, if anyone is going to grandfather, if an application has come in, if this does not prejudice those groups or their arguments for, for grandfathering in, in fact, they're grandfathering for their argument that they're grandfathering, okay? So just to be clear.
So we have a motion and a second, further discussion from the council? Guys, looks like it's mostly clerical change of the old line, from old language to the new language, so. Will the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, very generously.
Just so everyone understands, what I was worried about is someone saying that this ordinance was essentially re-adopted by what you did tonight, therefore undoing what you just did 15 minutes ago. Now it's not the intent, it's just going to make that change, so that it would be accurate for historic purposes.
Reports.
Frank, you're first. Steve couldn't be here tonight. Some notes. Roadside mowing continues on Second Road now. Headwall retention on Pennell Drive. Five rejuvenator, 3.6 mile rows, Wolf Rock Road, Len Rock Road. West Shore Drive, Burbs Drive, and Tepco Trail. Work to begin on the turnpike next. And as far as transfer stations concerned? Very busy over the weekend with the stickers, sales, people had complaints, you know. I think our guys down there do a good job as far as making sure that the rules are enforced. And it applies to everyone that comes through, so I commend them for doing that. As far as the animal shelter report is, it's close to the public, as we said at the beginning, next week, for the first week of certification training. We have a animal shelter tenant who is, gave her two week notice because she's going back to college. She would be a floater. And the other floaters will cover until the council accepts her letter and can advertise for the job. I had asked Steve if maybe I should ask Jim tonight if I can make a motion to post the job during the report. I know there's no, Steve had told me that, he says, he says he can cover the hours for now. So until we post, accept the girl's resignation letter in October.
I don't see why you can't move, just simply to post a vacancy at this point. I mean, it, it appears to me to be an administrative thing to come up under your point, you need to do this, and then the council could, if they feel it's correct, to simply post, because you're not making any decisions other than to advise the public if there's, if there's a vacancy, so I think it's, I think it's appropriate to do it.
Okay, now make the motion, we post the position for the animal shelter tenant.
Second.
And there's discussion on that, Ray?
Nope, we'd like to thank Heidi for her time, to come out, take the time, I know she wants to pursue other avenues, and wish her best to walk in what she does in the future, so we'll regret. We'll consider her letter of resignation next October too. And then, right now, we're going to be short anyway, a person, so. And she's willing to come in and, and to act like a floater, she's got the experience to do that, but it works out for the town.
Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Any further, any else, Ray, on your reports?
Oh, I'm sorry, but just a quick question. You spoke, Ray, that seemed to be, the attendants seemed to be watching the issue with stickers. Apparently, from what we've heard here tonight, they've done that, which, and we know that they've been instructed to. But Lynn, just a quick question, was there any extra hours open? I know, did you open?
We were open Saturday all day, so the same hours of the transfer station. Tomorrow after, you know, 4 o'clock, we'll be open two hours extra tomorrow night.
It was a Saturday, I wanted to.
And we will be open this Saturday.
I can't.
We didn't open on Sunday this year because Sunday is what we, we don't get the business to open on a Sunday.
No, no.
You know, as many purchases and sneakers on Sundays, we didn't do it this year, but.
No, no, it's not a criticism, but I was curious. I was curious about Saturday, though, I pretty much, you were here.
7:30 to 4:00, I think.
Some, some people must have come in.
Oh, yeah, a lot, a lot.
Okay.
Yep, a lot, exactly. It's always difficult to decide what's going to work for the public.
Mr. President, to Calvin's point, I got contacted by a couple of constituents also. Ted didn't say anything to me till, till tonight. But I'm wondering if it would benefit the town and the taxpayers to have like a one weekend grace period. So, I mean, you had numerous people that showed up, didn't have the opportunity to get sticker because they were busy during the day, or they didn't know that they could get it on the town hall on the weekend. And it was like, I mean, I can't say that it wasn't posted, but I've always remembered in past years, there was always a sign saying, the sticker expires this date, you got to get the sticker. And I don't.
There was a sign right there.
And I don't remember seeing the sign there this year, and I'm there every weekend.
It's, but it's there all year, that's why, I think it puts background, it's always, it's always there. Before, I know what you're talking about, they used to put a new one right before.
Right.
But now they have a permanent sign there, that's big there year round, so I think now it's just.
Well, I think that's why everybody got caught off guard. So, I mean, it's too late now, but I'm thinking, maybe next year, you can have, along with the additional hours, you can have like a one weekend grace period. And that way, anybody that comes in with trash doesn't have to go home with trash, right? And say, you know, we're going to let you go this weekend, but you got to know by next Saturday or next Wednesday you have to add.
Me personally, I think personal accountability, people should know, I mean, I was away, so it didn't affect me, but I can't suggest it for the next council meeting.
Well, I've been, I've been buying a dump sticker for 20 years, right? And there has been a couple of years where I got caught off guard, where I forgot to get it, or whatever.
Yeah, but happened to me last year, when I was like, yeah, my bad, and.
It was on the website, it was posted.
Well, yeah, I did, to your point.
I can see both sides.
Right, to your point, I think the next council.
But I'm, you know, I'm worried about, you know, you get senior citizens that don't get out that much, and they go home, and they load the trash in their vehicle, and then now they got to go home, and then they want to leave in their car, or they stink it up.
Or even maybe just more signage at that, the weekends, in, or yet.
Something.
So if you wanted to do a grace period, it's not in the ordinance, can they just make a motion to allow a grace period? Or would you have to make that every year?
I don't know.
I understood what Frank said, he just wants more signage in advance, so that people have fairer warning, possibly in the future, that's. But requires a grace period if you do that.
Can I just speak to Frank's point? There might be people, I can't say, I don't use it. But there might be people that only make the run once every two or three weeks, and might have gotten caught up. And so, so the week before, even if the attendants were to say, as people drive, don't forget, next week you need a sticker, but if somebody hadn't been there since, since August 1st.
They need to do that.
I, I understand, and, and there was a lot of concern about laxness. So now it's, it's, I don't, I think Frank makes a good point, but I also think, I mean, if, if, and I, and I understand what Lynn said, it wasn't busy enough to really warn people being here, but at the same time, and it's hard because it's a, it's a weekend, it's a holiday weekend, it always falls that way, but if they could have said, but you can go right to the town hall now and get it.
They did on Saturday.
They did, you see, but because you, because you weren't here. I mean, I just, I understand Frank's point, I understand why you didn't do it.
I think if we went to a grace period, just, I'd say, like I said, to have the council.
Just remember.
Just one week, one weekend grace period. And then, and then I think you're not going to have all the controversy and contention again next year. Unless you wanted to change the week.
That's if we even.
Not have it on the late season weekend.
Well, that's for the other transfer station next year.
Two years from now.
Anyway, that's a good for next year's council.
The only, the analogy that I, the analogy that I made was, unless you happen to look at your, your, the windshield that expired, it's like, how many of us drive around, and go, oh, darn it, my inspection sticker's expired. It's the same thing, right?
But to Calvin's point, if there's a sign, and every time you go, oh, that's right, the signs, ooh, September 4th, I mean, there's, there's two sides, yeah. It's right, you make a point, you're good.
Do you want to continue, Frank, with the school district?
Sure. Although I didn't do the collections report, I'm going to do that.
I have written a note, I have covered a little bit, so you can go ahead.
We all, we all got it, but I'll read it anyway. Total collections for the month of August were 1,522,829.85. All monies have been reported to Maria the Treasurer, and the delinquent tax blocks are continuing to be removed on a daily basis. I know that, the only other thing I have to add is I know that Kim is still in the process of trying to work things out with DMV, so we'll be able to register our cars online, because we're still one of the few towns that can't do that.
Does she have any idea when that would be happening, or is she?
No.
School district?
As I said before, the, the kids are back to school, obviously. So everybody should be cautious of the school buses. The building committee is meeting on 9/11 to discuss the governor's proposed money that was in the budget with regards to school improvements. We solidified a date for the school district finance committee, on the 17th. And I was going to ask Mrs. Allen if she had anything to add, but she's already left, so really that's all I had.
Okay. Let's go over the tax assessors office, Cal.
Well, you have Carrie's report, just a couple of highlights I think we should note. She has been working with Jim on the tax documents, a stabilization agreement. And I know there's been a good deal of back and forth there. Jim, thank you very much for working with Carrie there. And a couple of other things here, did you note that supplemental bills are being issued for vehicles that are being added to the role because they were mistakenly sent to other towns, and now they're finding their way here, and the bills are being sent? And there were no, I found it interesting that there were no appeals at all, because, you know, the values have been changed. And, and the arrangements.
Do you have a team of the Job Corps?
Did you, did you have a report, a brief one that came to me from Center Director Adam White? And it just, he highlights the fact that there are four new work-based learning sites that have been created for their students, one's at Dan's Place in West Greenwich, Frankie's Italian Bistro in North Kingston, and T's Restaurant Narragansett, plus Securitas. And he indicates that that led to a full-time placement at One Financial Plaza in Providence by one of the Job Corps, apparently recent, well, I don't know if recently graduated, but they're there. Two former welding graduates have been hired at eBay full-time at $15 an hour. They've hired others, but this is like from the last time we heard. And then a new, and then in terms of center upgrades, he says that there's a new security checkpoint building that's been wired, will ensure more efficient checkpoint processes and access control. Interestingly, somebody called me today and said, when is the primary? And I said, well, it's next week, it's not today, it's a week from tomorrow, but it won't be at Job Corps anymore because of their new security features, we can't do that anymore. And there are an increase in welding machine as students, slots have opened up. So he seems to think things are going well. I did hear that there was some sort of outside investigation going on, but nobody's spoken of that, and I'm assuming that was just a routine, hopefully. But I didn't hear any more about it, so, I mean, I think just, well, like, just an order of that kind of thing. But I hear nothing, so I assume everything's fine, we have it.
Public safety, Dan?
All quiet. Exit to old land preservation. We got a eBay on back related, on, do that again?
She sent the, yeah, she sent the draft that they have, they've already incorporated Jim's comments, and now I am.
I don't think they've meditated, so, no, that, that's a few emails from them, so, that's still a work in progress.
Exeter Public Library, they start their storytime on tomorrow. They run September 4th through the 9th, it's every Wednesday, from 10:30 to about noon, they bring classes for kids. And then on Fridays, they have their family days, 9:30, 11:30, kids ages five. And then also, if you're looking to get a passport or holder, they're still doing applications there at the office. No action on the North Kingston Preserve at Roland Greens? Ken, council assistance report?
Oh, sorry.
Perfect, Jim?
Very briefly, we have perfected the Arcadia appeal in the Superior Court, so there is a mediation process that you have to go through, which really doesn't fly fast. I don't think they're going to make us go through mediation. I'm not sure that Richmond has filed their appeal yet officially, but I know that's in the works. So that's what's going on there. You've seen, we did get a favorable decision out of Superior Court in the P'achi case. Steve Sardell handled that, he did a good job. No appeal as yet, has been taken in half, it's my knowledge. I have a couple of other matters to the executive side.
Okay. Do you want to have a roll of the bills, appropriations abatements, bill sheet?
Move to approve the bill sheet with that presented.
A second? Discussion? Favorably aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Tax assessors abatements?
I move they approve any amount of $1,302,830.
A second? Discussion? Favorably aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the tax collectors remittances and abatements?
I'm making a motion to approve the remittances for $311.79. And. cents, and, and the abatements in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Uh, second? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Other administrative issues? Very non-communications, we pulled one, number fifteen, which is.
Already, already.
Already done?
Yeah.
All right, so, executive session, um, I believe we're going in under D.
Uh, also A.
A and D, okay. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session under A, um, future, current future litigation, writing upon, and D, transfer station lease and purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
I hear a balance, if you'd like to leave.
Mr. President, do you have a brief thesis? Wait a minute, go.
Are you able to speak, Ken?